PM on Wednesday, August 20th of 2025. I'm calling the Columbus Art Commission meeting to order. Our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, September 17th, 2025 at 4:00 PM at this very same location, 1111 North Front Street in room 204. Now we'll move to swearing and city staff. So do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Very much. Staff call for both please.
Commission, come on then. Commission two, here. Commission three, here.
Here.
Commission five, yeah. Yes. All house today.
Moving into public forum. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to an item that related to the agenda? There ain't no, we don't have anyone, but good, we'll move forward with that. I need a motion to request, I mean, a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
I need a motion.
I'll second.
Who has been moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Eyes have it, let's move forward. Reporting materials, we want to go back to your piece.
Yes, yeah, and on your application, so our first application is COA 2500795 at 1161 High Street. So, um, our application here. You can form the short note of lines.
Rachel.
Bobby.
Okay.
And move on to application number two. So I'll go back to that one again.
Not there. Are you in the short note of line?
I'm right.
Oh, perfect.
If you would like to, I'll hear.
If you wouldn't mind, just say no name. Currently. State your name first, please.
Betsy, can I run? They said, you're the first one following.
How you doing, Betsy? If you could, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth? Very good. We are actually on your application right now, so.
Um, this is a request for action for the expansion of this artwork. Um, the proposed work description is the short note of lines, Stonewall Columbus, proposing to add several additional circles representing other LGBT+ identities to the existing piece, thereby expanding footprint out this artwork. The artist will use interconnected surfaces. Um, surface applied pre-thermoplastic, slip-resistant material-specific sidewalks, as approved by the CAC and IDC in 2021. In 2021, the short note of lines and Stonewall Columbus worked together to commission Columbus artists to utilize the climate to create the first ever permanent public artwork installed on a public site. The existing pride circles represent a portion of a few of the many pride and identity flags in the LGBT+ community. The installation takes shape in the form of a concrete building with five roofs, and it's a representation of the area to the right. The end of the expansion of the piece is to further integrate the LGBT+ narrative into the short note of artistic identity, creating a place where all individuals can feel themselves included in the community's creative fabric. The status analysis is section 3115 that states that the commission should be guided by the preserving of the property or the city, the maintenance of the proper civic values, the providing and maintenance and orderly balance in the location of the arts of art, and prevention of light of deterioration in and around public buildings. And the summary is the proposal generally needs to be covered to the commission. And the basis for this recommendation is 3115 that says, "The commission is required." Um, our packet here. Some information on our artists. Um, this is the area where the expansion is going to take place. And then the proposed design. The benefits of the expansion. The proposed budget. Post- installation. And then some information. We have that.
For you.
Thank you so much. This has been a really impactful project in our community since it's been installed, so much so that Stonewall Columbus approached us and asked if we could complete the project actually as the artist had originally intended. When Lisa proposed it, this was her original design that she had proposed. Due to the amount of funding that we had assembled in 2021, we weren't able to proceed with every identity. And as we continued to have discussions and really community enjoyment of this art piece, it became clear to us since Stonewall that we wanted to be as inclusive as possible in how we fully represent the work of the artist and how everyone can truly be seen as a part of this installation. I can't espouse upon you enough the manner in which this art has actually taken on a lot of identity for people in the community as it is up with identity in the community. The year after it was installed, Stonewall integrated the artistic design into the logos and identities for the Pride Grade and Festival. That year, it literally is centering language for how they describe the center as a community space. And it's probably, in our view, one of the most strong examples of how public art actually can move people and be integrative into their lives. So we're excited that because of the occasion of some major events planned, we'll have some announcements attached to them relatively soon, Stonewall. But in September, we'd love to be able to complete the pieces. The artists had originally realized it in keeping with that timeline. Uh, we are, the project is fully funded and ready to go upon approval. So we think it continues to add value and excitement to our community and continues to be an innovative application of public art. We use the thermoplastic as the material. Have any answer any questions?
I used to bike by Bessie every day, and I'm so impressed with how it's held, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm surprised all.
Yeah. So I guess, I guess the question that I have, I think this is fantastic. I'm so excited to see this. Yeah, Lisa is perfectly positioned to do this work. Will there be kind of a retouching of the surface of the existing?
Yeah, so the manner in which the piece is applied, it is heat adhered, it's actually fused on to the sidewalk with a blowtorch, a very compelling looking blowtorch. They will be able to do some touch-ups of the entirety of the piece as a part of this reinstallation process. We power wash it, we provide some regular maintenance to it, but there'll be a general refresh.
So it's not paint?
It is not paint, no. It is the exact same material that if you're driving on a road or walking across the sidewalk or walking across a, an intersection, the pavement markings are made of what's called thermoplastic, which is sort of this plastic material that when high heat is applied to it, it then kind of merges with the concrete or the asphalt surface. And this is a really innovative project because of the need to be compliant with requirements that prevent safety hazard in terms of slipping. So if you paint on the sidewalk, depending on the quality of the paint, the thickness of the paint, if you do not mix grit within that paint, if it gets wet, you create a slip risk. And so this actually is fully prevented for that. It's not cheaper than paint.
So that's what I'm thinking.
Where's your inspiration for this?
We're using thermoplastics. Use thermoplastics. So, um, believe it or not, there is a guy named James Young, who is the deputy director of the city's department of public service. And when we were collaborating to achieve the improvements to the street state of the short note years and years and years ago, we started to share concerns over the slip factor and the challenges that artists would find in being able to actually create work on this particular surface. And he said to us, you know, there's a guy who happens to be based in Columbus, who is the lead distributor and manufacturer of thermoplastic, which is what we use on roads. Just call him up. And so one of the most exciting things I've ever seen is watching an artist interact with someone who doesn't usually find himself in the space of creating art in this way, to have a really innovative set of conversations around how we can reimagine the use of a material. And it's truly been a very fulfilling experience, I think, on all sides. But you have the city of Columbus to thank for that very, very helpful suggestion and a company that just so happens to be headquartered here but provides manufacturing services of this material across the entire country.
Well, thank you so much.
I just think this is so attractive, celebratory. Quick question, I haven't been by recently. Is there a QR code?
There is signage.
Okay.
Yeah, there is.
For each, for each symbol?
There is, uh, there was a plaque that is on the exterior of the building. You know, Mary, you've asked me to quickly, I can't recall if we installed a QR code on the plaque or not. But there is on our website and on Stonewall's website, a video that documents the installation and making of this particular piece. And it actually documents all of the identities that are represented currently in the piece. And we would update those materials so that a member of the public could continue to have access and understanding of who are all of the identities that are being represented here.
Personally, I would love to see a QR code so somebody standing there can look this up.
Yep.
I'm telling you, I find this incredibly educational. I myself had to look a couple of these terms up.
Me too.
And so this was so helpful to me. And I don't want anybody else walking by having to guess what they all mean. So if we could do that, that'd be great. The only other thing I'm gonna say is the straight ally is just so boring with black and white. Oh, well.
You know, it's fascinating, I think a credit to the artist is, you know, these are identities that are not decided by me.
Oh, of course not, no, 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 and I, that was.
And she is actually trying to be quite authentic to the way in which the various.
Absolutely.
But you are matching the, your outfit is matching the identity.
I am, so there I am, yeah.
I think you mentioned that the original design was conceived in 2024.
Yeah.
And so between, you know, so four years after, has there been any revision, you know?
Lisa made some slight modifications to this from the exact original that she had created.
Because of the identity, that's true, or there are increased of identity, so I don't know.
It was because there were certain identities that didn't get included in the original design. And so she didn't prioritize straight ally as being represented as maybe straight allies have other avenues of being represented, right? And so now we want to provide an opportunity for there to be inclusion across all known identities today. Yep.
I will say, I've passed, we all personally know Lisa. Like, she's actually the seventh angel on this.
Right.
That's right. And that's the first time I ever heard of these representing. Yeah, as much as I've passed them, I've seen your post about it. Yeah. Never was it made clear that these represented identities. And it makes me appreciate it so much more now that I know that. Yeah. Because I thought we were kind of adding color to the block, right? So I would say, just moving forward, I'm sure you have signage, but maybe it should be more prominent or maybe even when this does get updated in your next, let's say, video that you do about it. Make sure people know that. Because it definitely changes everything about how anyone's gonna feel about this. Yeah. And, um, yeah, it's just, it's a game changer to know that it represents much more than just colors, right? And seeing that mapping been the key to it, you know? Now I understand what like the straight ally was like, I never, this is educational for me. So, no, this is a strong and good luck. Thank you. Great feedback.
Any other questions from this? Any questions from the public? Answer. We actually can move this to a vote.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? Eyes have it, we move this in good luck.
Yeah, can we ask, see?
See all of you. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
Any order? Well, great.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next application is COA 2500795 at 801 Deppard Road. And this is Columbus Water.
Yes, how are you? Please say your name and your affiliation, please.
How are you all?
Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth? Floor is yours.
Um, so we were here last year, and I think you guys were not here. So we have conversations on how water, so it's a pretty learned asset for our utility. And before we started last year, it was packed a lot with graffiti. So we wanted to use it as a chance to educate the community about what we as utility do. We actually just went through a name change. We were previously Columbus Department of Utilities. People thought that they were a single provider. They weren't sure what services we're actually providing. So that is why, um, I'm just in business for the name change. So in kind of alignment with that, as utility, we're also really trying to tell we can give more about what we do to work in the ground, literally. So just educating, working with water in our everyday life. We had chosen to begin to partner with Flow, from the Old Indian Water Shed. They are a great resource in our community, doing tons of great work for the Old Indian Water Shed, because this falls on their watershed. This is a good opportunity to partner with them. So we are, we have a pump station about a half mile south of the one that we picked last year. So it's on the Old Indian Trail. It is new here, lower.com. There's a footbridge in that area, so that's where that is. This is so much bigger than this last one. So as such, we, we've opened a budget. We were going to try to do two this year, but it's been realized that it was not going to be possible. And we followed a very similar process to last year. We put out a call for artists. I think we did a better job getting it out manually, luckily. It really helped, we were chasing people around, like, "CCD, like, where's a good place to put this?" And of course, it's right up to the waters. But we were really trying to get that out. We had 70, over 70 applicants, which is more than last year. We narrowed it down to five. It's really hard. Um, and then the, as an internal group met, well, sorry, we did put it out for public vote. Public had about two and a half weeks to select their option. I'm sorry, those are not the ones that got voted on, but examples of artists. And then they ended up selecting Andy Clarkson. And then internally, we ended up also selecting Andy's. We thought his, it was a really tough choice. Last year was a pretty good ride, we wanted to go with, but we were really struggling this year. So we decided to go with Andy because Andy did a really good job of incorporating utility. And he took our advice of maybe making the lights pop a little bit more, the first round consideration. And we must, making those pop, be there just in a lot of wildlife, be the system component, and like constant people component as well. So we really thought he did the, a great job of responding to the properties that we provided. So we have decided to go with him. It is very visible, thankfully, that seems like, and in the process of getting it, I will. I'll see her at that. But, but yeah, good question.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
We're the weekend, actually.
Yeah, it was a really great project, we had a nice unveiling, lots of, it was just very supportive. And then our utility and she's not breathing in here, we're just telling you how she likes to pass third bikes, five, full circle. No, sorry. How it's added a nice visual.
Floor is open. Any questions?
So now I have a staff vote.
Oh.
We're staff for four. Um, happy basically, COVID, everything, that was it. And it does jump.
Jump right into this, sorry.
I don't know if I speak for everybody, but you, you did a great job. I like that there was a process. You allowed the community to vote. Like, there's so many layers in how we selected Andy that I just feel confident about this. Usually we'll like ask, like, wait, who got to pick this? Did the community get some, like, insight? But it sounds like you did everything to honor community and they selected the best one. So I don't know that we have very many questions because you actually covered everything that we usually. Right. Right. I would just say, you know, the only, the question that we always ask is how, you know, how does the artist get credited? I know for something like this, if the bike path feature, a plaque or something added. But other than that, you know, that was kind of, I think you did a fantastic job.
It sold a black purple circle, and it was kind of a little off. So we didn't already fund the, a month later, the plaque came out. So we tried to be ahead of the game, so it coincided better this year. But we have the plaque about, essentially describing, like, a brief description of what Nick last year, what his piece was about. And we included QR codes as well towards Nick's Instagram, Flow's website, and, and we also, our website as well, the Flow and Nick picture.
And you do make this available on the website as well, right? Once it's finished.
Like, post seeing pictures?
Yeah. I was thinking, because if I'm, if I'm just driving by it, of course, I'm like, it'd be great to know that I can actually access the, your portal to see or get information.
Um, Dara, it's on the website, I think it's.
What's going on?
I think the number one thing would be to make sure GCAT puts it on the map.
Yeah.
Because they've built out now this kind of mural map for the city. The thing where we need to start directing these projects is to make sure your project's getting picked on your bigger map. So.
So first of all, I love that y'all like gave the semifinals, assigned to, but their effort, you know, getting some of their IP and taking them through the process, they play a huge role. The maintenance, I see the budget is a thousand dollars, why so low?
Um, it is. The one side will face the Old Indian Trail. I don't, you know, my head, I have all this from above.
And that's to prevent the tagging, you think, in nature? And what's, what's the long-term, the long-term vision the maintenance is?
Um, so you have a flyer, a little bit of flow, and you'll have to add, it becomes part of the city's.
Okay.
We have extended.
Okay.
So.
We're all figuring that out.
Yeah, we're all figuring that out right here. No, that's great.
And we are asking, um, we're asking you this for.
Okay. Okay, yeah, okay, all right.
So how's that fly, we have, it would need a vote from you.
Okay.
To be a champion.
Oh, okay. So.
Delighted to see that the artist is being paid well for the work. And not always.
Is this a hand painted mural?
Yes.
Oh, you're, yeah, I understand.
Yeah. It's like, yes, it's a great, yeah.
This is on my finance statement for your guys' representation. This is fifty dollars, it's moving forward, that's, that's a good ballpark.
Yes.
Yeah. It's a little from five hundred.
What's that to like?
Where did you get your funding from?
When it comes out of our division of water, from we show my paper offering the budget. So yeah, there's an, it's in the back. Something from the city attorney's office that we can use our repair money for education.
Okay. Congratulations on a new name, too. Wow.
Um, we don't have any questions at all, anything from the public? Question? Time? All right, let's move to a vote.
I'll make a motion.
If we have a first and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention? I have a aye, so, yeah. It passes, congratulations.
Yeah, fantastic.
Amazing work, amazing work, looking forward to it.
If you do any openings, make sure we get invited.
Yeah, I would love to come check this out.
Please.
This will be sweet.
My show, I would love this.
Sure, that's a little.
The COA 2500816 at 3901 Old High Street. And if you'd like to start up a few minutes.
Yes.
Help me pronounce your name. Eve, right? Would you raise your hand, state your name and your affiliation, please?
My name is Eve Wardock, and I'm affiliated with Abos Interactive and with the.
And do you swear or promise to tell the whole truth, but nothing but the truth?
Yes.
There you go. The floor is yours. Oh, sorry, stop. Boom, so.
Application is a request for action. Sculptures, the installation of five, we're very eco-friendly and biocrazy for sculpture. The West Brothers have a project that was. Um, we are Puzzles Something Beta is the name of the sculpture bar. They have five sculptures that are eco-friendly and biocritical. And it's likely to be the, 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 of August to pass to the people that go up to and back from this. During the Columbus event. Abolis curated and produced the Puzzles Something Beta exhibition in collaboration with the Eco-Autist Spirit and the Arborfest team. Um, the six artists involved in this project are Eve Wana, and Helen Johnson from Abolis, Motherfoul, Kelly Gandala, Lance Johnson, and Summer Ronaldo. Lance Johnson and Motherfoul will be a performance at every festival and will be producing sculpture. Um, the status analysis is section 3115 that states that the commission should be guided by the preserving of the property or the city, the maintenance of the proper civic values, providing and maintaining an orderly balance, paying attention to environmental works of art, and prevention of light of deterioration in and around public buildings. And the summary is the proposal generally needs to be covered over the commission by the commission. And the basis for this is section 3115 that says, "The commission is required." We have. That's it. Okay. So many different rooms. Some examples, some consulting, some sculptures, background on the context. So this is the second year that I've participated in the Arbor Festival. And the first year, we worked on a sculpture that had Sycamore, Great Vine, Clay, and Twenty Seven. And what I found was that it took about three months to understand how to use natural materials. And as an artist, what I'm finding is that in the art world, a lot of materials actually don't consider the environment. And so this exhibition is purposely putting a community of artists together to start talking about the environment and finding ways to use natural material in order to create sculptures against artwork. And so what was included with this actual exhibition was a residency. So I created a residency where I invited the artists to come. And it had the Living Eagle Lab from the Outstate University to offer workshops on natural harvesting, or harvesting and forging, workshops, natural dyeing, and natural binding. So the artists had education of what happened for three months, that they could have a lot of time to understand the ways of using natural materials. And then it's into a workshop. And so the artists were educated on before or beyond sculptures. Working with the Arbor Fest, with the Arbor Fest, Columbus Arbor Fest is an incredible festival. It's about the tree canopy here in Columbus, Ohio. And they were looking, last year we did one sculpture, I wanted to expand it. So I was like, oh, please, this is a wonderful opportunity to bring the community of artists. So I selected, I curated the exhibition and selected five artists. And the reason why I selected the artists wasn't because they were people artists, actually. I know many people artists, but that wasn't the point. It's actually finding artists that were using other materials to support them and finding natural materials. And so Kelly Gendele is a sound artist, actually, that also works in spiritual realms or spiritual worlds and穿着 costumes. Summer Ronaldo does the Shakedown Circus, which is a, a, I would call this like a self-expression circus. It's for less, it's a sexy circus, actually. And she does a lot with expression. We have Lance Johnson, Lance Johnson, who works with words. Uh, we have Lance Johnson, uh, Jack Lance Johnson, who works with words and with a lot of, um, aerosol. And we're looking at natural dyes and ways to use natural dye in this material. And then Obolus, we use light and actually Obolus, we actually, um, use a lot of bio, like our whole lens is the environment. So we work a lot in commercial spaces and always try to find materials that are environmentally friendly. So, and Motherful, so Motherful is an amazing nonprofit that we work with a lot, who, um, will be doing a performance and also what we've. Worked with them before, um, so it's also bringing the mothers to the table to also talk about what their, um, and the relationships. And so, um, conceptually, what the sculpture is, is, is looking at fashion, looking at spirituality and the relative environments. And so we have actually, and there's four sculptures, uh, originally we have five, but Dana Harper was able to, Dana Harper was a bit, I'm really sad that we aren't able to. But it, it maybe wasn't correct. Uh, and so, um, it's looking at, uh. Four sculptures and it is, one is called RIP, which is Rest in Peace, it's a scene in brief, actually. Then we have Smile, which is looking at joy, and then we have these two that are connecting, which is, um, Interlock and Stan. What we're looking at, so this is the second year, we're still, um, in the material views, with different types of material views. So we have, uh, Great Vines can be made one from Obolus as a structural, so we're using Great Vines and, uh, create rings. To, um, span trees or to hang, supporting them. Um, the other artists are using a little bit more conventional materials, which are looking at burlap, we're looking at cotton, we're looking at linen and, um, I think, um. Fimo Mache and, you know, like wax canvas. Okay, but all biodegradable, Lance Johnson, this would be an actual dyes with canvas and muslin. Um, and he's doing dyes made from all different types, we work with, um, hardwood and French wild and walnut. And airfoam and dinkins and ligo and, uh.
That's right.
And the chill beetle, the beetle, the beetle, which is not. Prefer plants, but yeah, in order to get those bright colors, because artists, they think of arts and natural elements that sometimes are that bright. Or that, you know, it's hard to find the tools that fit within, um, kind of the vision. And so we're really trying to work on, you know. So in the second year, this was curated, but in the third year, we're working with Arbor Fest, um, our goal is to expand it from a public forum. And we're looking at, um, offering it, but that takes a lot of organization and that, uh, for Obolus, we weren't ready for that, especially because it's an experimental, it's very experimental. I don't know how many equal sculptures are being presented in public parks, um, so this is kind of a big deal to be able to do something like this. Uh, so we kept it more continuous, not mainly, um, and. Um, really looked at how we make it possible, we kept it with that week duration, um, because other bolis, we can do it for one day. But actually what I'm trying to do or what I'm trying to create is the possibility to incorporate public arts with equal materials for longer durations. So we felt like a way that we would watch and see, um, and maintain the sculptures that week, but also we're going to see it change because it's out in the weather. And they are organic, so they change within what water, drying out, um, and, um, but the materials are very friendly, um, structurally also and, uh. I'm not going to say easy to use, but they're pretty friendly and all this. I'm not using it totally.
Are we, do we have an opportunity to see the two performances, clips from the two performances?
Two performances, opportunities, that's possible, I can send them or, or we could look online. So the performances are in motion right now and it is going to be offerings to the tree with a choir. So Motherful, um, has a group of mothers that will be seen each of the four trees. Um, offering, um. Whatever they decide, uh, and kind of to the rooms of the trees. And the goal is that it extends further than, uh, the park actually goes within the system of groups.
Will, will, okay, let me just give you a little background here. I worked for the Ohio Arts Council and ran the Rite Gallery for a number of years. And, um, before we could approve something, we always needed to see, uh, an example or, you know, because. We, we, we never knew what an artist might potentially do. And, um, I don't know how anybody else feels about that, if anybody else has any concerns.
I guess my question is more, I'm trying to get to know the event, uh, what is, who's your audience?
Audience are children and families, so children, it is open to the public.
Okay.
But the performance is during the Arbor Fest at three o'clock.
Okay.
And I guess, well, I'm, I'm going to ask a question because I didn't know the public performance needed to go through the Arts Commission. I only thought the sculpture fit. Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Bring that because I actually only thought.
Sure, sure.
Because I would definitely have.
A one day performance.
Yes.
It wouldn't be.
Okay, good to know.
Yes.
Well then.
I definitely would show that if I didn't know.
Fantastic. And I don't know that we've ever had anybody ask, you know, present with, uh, perfor- uh, performance component before, so. Okay, now we know in the future.
If it was an ongoing performance.
Right, right. And you so remind me of Dorothy Gilburns. Do you know Dorothy Gilburn's work?
Well.
Anybody else? Oh, there, you, your work is beautiful. Beautiful.
So how are you from that in seven days of, and these like vibrant, great, well, like how are you doing the weather for these two years?
So Great Vine, um, one is the artist's weapon, they change, right? So that's part of the experience. Um, however, it's not like, so, for instance, the cloud, the cloud might turn a little sad. The nose might turn a little bad, and the, the weatherproofing of the, the collar is going to be just fine, like it's, whether it's waxed. Uh, the grapevine is actually a really sturdy material, grapevine, um, and it will be just fine, um, throughout the whole process. The linen and the burlap will also be fine, um, they, they will look well with the, with the weather. Um, so. And wind, so we did wind consideration too, and, uh, there's no flat panel, so even thinking about how the sculptures are constructed, the black airways. So that wind would be, and the structure we found would be special.
Very unique. And then I saw your exit, exhibition duration is from eight thirty to nine thirty every day, so is that like an hour of observation? How does that work?
The exhibition is, uh, the park hours, so it'll be either eight AM to nine PM.
But panels never.
This is AM, AM.
Oh, it's, okay, AM.
Sorry, I'm, I just read that.
Yeah, I didn't mean to call them. No, that's fine, that's good, I need to fix that.
You only have an hour.
How was that working? Like, I was just imagining people in like a circle or something.
We have three questions, answers for the artists and then they have a performance, but the, the sculptures will be opened when that, that park.
Got it, got it, so it's.
I'll be able to leave. Okay.
So maybe this question is more like for Sophie rather than the confidence. So the installation day is Christmas, is tomorrow. So I wonder, you know, when this application comes in, you know, so I'm just thinking that, you know, like, as a commission, you know, if we. You know, if anything that we have any objection about, you know, this project, that it doesn't seem working, you know, to the client. Other things I do with you by the commission. So I'm just questioning, like, when the application comes in, you know, it feels like, you know, we are in a position that the only thing that we can. Say is more like just our opinion, you know. Do you understand that the kind?
It probably is.
Yeah, I see, yeah. Is that our, you know, intention to, you know, to, to be invested for it? So, you know, I don't know if there is any guidance to our efforts, when they should come back, you know, just in case, you know, anything that would, you know. That we might not be opposition to the commission. So I don't know. Guidance to the.
No, it's just. Well, just like we can't hold my guy for five, I will be.
So, uh. Personally. I feel like this is something we haven't seen before, someone coming before, well, at least for me, I'm, I'm, we're one of the new kids in the block, but. I've never seen anything like this, uh, come before the commission before, um, you're here a day before install. I think for us to comfortably move forward, at least for me, you guys can object, I would love to. See how it goes, because at this point, you're kind of like a, a, a test run for us. Because your install is only, is a week, right? This is a unique situation with eco-friendly statues, so this is also something we don't see commonly, right? I'm wondering if, you know, there's some kind of, you know, uh. Something we work out where it's like, yes, you have, we have, you have our blessing today. On the terms that you come back, let us know how it goes, like, document. Uh, take notes, how did, we want to know how the sculpture fell apart, we want to know the details, um, and also, um. You know, like that recap, if you, if you would, of your event, just so we can get to know it better. And then with the recommendation that you come sooner next year, yeah, and something like that, you guys.
Yeah, I want to, I do want to pop in, I've been around a long time.
Right.
And this has happened to us, um, it was maybe two days as opposed to twenty four hours. And it was the, uh, the sculptures down in Schiller Park, uh, Catherine Moore came before us. And we, it was a great opportunity, it was like a last minute thing, when we saw the pieces, it was like, well, there's no way we can say no, that we wouldn't want to. And that. I certainly don't find anything objection, objectionable in these. But maybe amongst ourselves, we need to talk about. Do we have a hard and fast line in the future? But we, we have done this before.
Yes, it is funding, so, and not that matter from the other.
Yeah.
It was being able to get artists, make sure this goes through you and so then, and. All is going through, I'm sitting here, it's first time around, so I really appreciate that feedback because I was not paying attention. So we definitely moved through all the processes. We also got a permit for the forestry, so I put the form of permits and then Columbus Parks and Rec seeing the trees. We've been doing some background, um, just making sure that all those, um, elements were, um. Communicated and understood within all the pieces, uh, and now the Arts Commission, um, one day.
Because I, I just want to reiterate, I was still, still differing, because we were talking about. This is kind of an experiment in nature, that you're doing.
It is with the artists too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's safe, safely, an, an experiment, but it is an experiment, and so the whole thing is, um, in, it's a, a movement to do more. So this is a step to a larger project, actually, so it's a three base project, this is one of the, the phases in building the community and network and partnerships. To start looking at, um, ecology and artists and then actually in spirituality. And so that's where the store artists, they're coming, so we start to rethink how we live in this world. And with artists being part of that conversation, because I think artists definitely need to be more of that conversation. We need to start working with the city and building solutions and looking at climate change and the artists maybe talking about things and being at the forefront. And right now, I'm not really seeing that as much as, as we were wanting to. So now having a public park, having a public platform and a public perk. To be able to start having these conversations feels like it's a move, it's experimental and, um. Dedicated for it to be successful, I'm, I'll be the one maintaining those sculptures, we'll be bathing them, I'll be making sure that. Everything's safe, we have signage to put the feet of the sculptures, so there's signage that, it's A frames that are, you know, aimed for everything, what the tree is, the earth is. Have humor, but squirrels that don't fly, oh shucks, you know, like kind of making it so, but making sure they know it's art, not to, not to, you know. It's something you play on, um, so all those things are. Yeah, are in consideration maybe.
I'm also thinking about, you know, and how, how you keep this sort of thing going, right? As in, you know, you have so many stories, right? And we talked to a lot of our artists about, yeah, make sure you have a plaque or something like that, but I feel like here, there's even a larger story to explore. And really encourage you, I mean, to think about that, think, how is this going to live on, how am I going to educate people? You know, how are you going to kind of keep the momentum going for this kind of movement and this kind of?
Well, next, I'm thinking this could be a series in parks. And I'm working with the Columbus Parks and Rec, who are tree climbers and with David Tree, um, and potentially we could even think about utilizing those aspects. And making it more public, right? So this one I curated, it's an experiment, there's, there's too many unpredictable variables, like I need to make sure that. This is known, um, but in the next, next year, as well, then that goes more to sending out, uh, a, a public. And that would get that conversation even larger by just having it be more public and then having a. Process that we go through and pick artists, um, based on whatever that looks like. Exactly.
And my last question.
Sure.
Who's project this is?
This is Obolus, it is, so, it is my baby. Uh, so in the way that I'm dedicated to keep this running, baby. Each artist designed its own project. So it's opening the door, giving a platform for artists to show with me and Obolus, which is my, um, company. Obolus is an active business company here in Columbus, Ohio, we're a big studio, we work with like projection, we do sculptures, we do large scale, um, installation. And this is now looking at the environmental lens, we've always had a fire tool, so we've always used this, but now we're kind of putting that into a more forefront lens. As our company's going forward, that really talking about this at the important value from our company.
Are you located in Rat Bridge?
We are located in Columbus.
Okay, I'm just seeing something, Twin Falls Run Rat Bridge, join us for a public discussion, this was something.
That was for the residency, so what we did for the residency is education, but on the second day, we held a panel discussion that had, um, the Clean Action Plan. Kristy Walters, Green Spot, and the artists talked about the Clean Action Plan, and we, um, had a discussion about, um, in the public about how artists can be more, uh. Yep, so that was the residency.
Great, I'm really glad to hear your.
Yes. Actually, I moved it to more, like, right through that park, I thought I'm going to get those sculptures.
We reached consensus, is there any questions? Are you going to move to a vote?
I still move.
Oh. With the, with the contingency that she comes back.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Would that be September, so is it September seventeenth maybe?
So he's.
Backing all you all on.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
And then we have a moment for discussion and you can amend the motion. That's okay, it's all right.
Okay.
So there's a motion, we have first and second, are there any questions on the motion? Who was the second?
I'll be second.
Yeah. Questions on the motion? Amendment to the motion?
That they come back in Sep- September or October. So, so, yeah, give us an update, let us, give us a recap.
That's right, we have the amendments to the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstention?
Good luck.
The Arbor Fest is on Saturday.
Yes.
Three o'clock at, or two o'clock is the, um, tree summit, and that's with the master of forestry. So if you come to that, make sure you come to that, and then three o'clock, then we start the, we can change.
Have you ever made grapevine spheres before? Oh, God, they're beautiful. I just, I just pictured these things around.
Thank you very much, um. Time is a business, yeah.
Um, the contract is probably. They will be starting what? I wouldn't start that, um, contract squirrel.
Excellent.
One question outside of that, the, um. The website, I know, who, who's updating that or keeping that current?
The.
For the artist, um, I mean, as far as keeping things current, are we adding anything?
Our collection.
Our collection, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha, all right, thank you. No, I'm good, as long as I know you're doing.
And so who are we contacting remaining? It's long, that rest, I shouldn't be letting them.
They're here.
And I did send you all the, um, S W.
Yep. All right, this is, we got to the end of our agenda. Unless there are anything else. We stand adjourned, I'll take a motion. Second. All in favor, yay, we are adjourned, thank you so very much.
I'm questioning this.
This is.